Good evening. And welcome to the Monday, September 24th, regular City Council meeting. Allie, let's see, we've completed a joint meeting with Mercer Island School Board and are now moving into our regular meeting. And Allie, you ready to call? Roll?
Yes. Councilmember Debbie Burtland. Councilmember Jane Braun.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Searle.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Grady.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Dan Gross.
Here.
Mayor Bruce Bassett.
Here. Thank you. Okay, we begin tonight with special business of two proclamations. And before I begin on these, I will point out that there's some sentences here that I found hard to read to myself. So when I don't sound like I'm making sense, it's because the sentence just got the best in me. All right, a proclamation. Whereas the Eastside Cities in King County recognize adequate nutrition as a basic goal for each citizen. And whereas no parent should have to send a child to school hungry, no baby should be without the comforts of the feedings needed for mental and physical growth, and no elderly person's health should be jeopardized by lack of appropriate foods. And whereas food banks, emergency, and hot meal programs, working with cities, local churches, social service agencies, and volunteers, are striving each day to stem the rising tide of hunger but still need more help. And whereas we believe that when citizens who are not involved hear of the desperate, of the especially desperate needs of the hungry as winter approaches and their low income must stretch to cover increased seasonal living expenses, leaving less money for food, an outpouring of community assistance will follow. And whereas the emergency feeding program of Seattle and King County coordinates an annual food drive to help support the efforts of their program and area food banks in fighting hunger. And whereas the cities of Kirkland, Redmond, Bellevue, Issaquah, Sammamish, and Mercer Island would like to extend this effort into an entire month of concern for the hungry from September 22 to October 23, 2012. Now therefore, I, Mayor Bruce Bassett, on behalf of the Mercer Island City Council, do hereby proclaim September 22 to October 23, 2012, as Eastside Month of Concern for the Hungry. And all citizens are strongly urged to join the Emergency Feeding Program, Hope Link, Renewal Food Bank, Issaquah Food Bank, and the Mercer Island Food Pantry, and the ARAS Foundation to share what they can and nourish those who are hungry. Approve this 24th day of September 2012. And with that, Cindy, if you could step up for just a moment, we have somebody here for you to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. I'd like to introduce Darwin Anderson, and he's with the Emergency Feeding Program of Seattle, King County. Just before he speaks, he's going to give you a few stats and a word of thanks. I'd just like to just point out, you'll hear more in one of our updates later on this month, that Mercer Island also faces the issue of hunger and food insecurity. Over last year, our number is so far up 17 percent, which looks like that's holding true for the full county. So I'd like to have Darwin Anderson say a few words about this.
Welcome, Darwin.
Thank you. Let me say good evening, and I thank you to you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and all council members and the citizens of Mercer Island for the support that you have shown to Emergency Feeding Program and throughout the city and this county. You know, what you do means a lot. It means a lot to those individuals that depend on us and over some 130 locations that distribute the food for Emergency Feeding Program as well. And I just wanted to personally thank you. You just heard about the 17 percent increase. That's pretty much standing across the board. We've seen that throughout our organization of the increase in the demand of folks that are looking for food because of the situation that they find themselves in, being hungry. And we find that our finances continue to dwindle at this time, but the demand continues to increase. And somehow, some way, we continue to be there. And one of the ways I know that we continue to be there is because of what each of you are doing and giving us that support and the citizens here in Mercer Island. So again, on behalf of Emergency Feeding Program and as the Chair of the Board of Directors for Emergency Feeding Program, once again, I thank you.
Thank you. Okay, another proclamation. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and wellness, and whereas the benefits of prevention and effective treatment of mental and/or substance abuse disorders are significant, people in recovery achieve healthy lifestyles both physically and emotionally and contribute in positive ways to their communities. And whereas it is essential to realize mental health and substance use disorders are treatable and people should seek treatment for these conditions with the same urgency as they would any other health concern. And whereas National Recovery Month increases awareness that treatment works, recovery is possible, and benefits everyone. And whereas all citizens are asked to celebrate this year's recovery theme, "Join the Voices for Recovery, It's Worth It." Now therefore, I, Bruce Bassett, Mayor of the City of Mercer Island, Washington, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2012 as National Recovery Month in Mercer Island and call upon our citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to support this year's theme, "Join the Voices for Recovery, It's Worth It." Sign this 24th day of September 2012. And Cindy, again.
Thank you again, Mayor, and members of the council. I'd like to introduce Jackie Burgania. Jackie works for Seattle, King County, in dependency services. She's been instrumental in advocacy for youth and for treatment throughout the county for many, many years. And she's a strong supporter of the work we do with Communities That Care, and she's been a collaborator of ours since, I think it was 1995 that we first applied for our grant. So Jackie Burgania would like to say a few words.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Bassett and honorable councilmembers, my name is Jackie Burgania. As Cindy had mentioned, I'm with the King County Mental Health, Chemical Abuse, and Dependency Services Division, and I am Community Prevention Coordinator. On a personal level, too, I have family and close friends who have struggled with substance abuse and mental health disorders, including alcoholism, depression, and dependency on cocaine and methamphetamine. But through treatment and community support, are now in recovery. On behalf of King County, the recovery communities of King County, and the citizens of Mercer Island, we thank you for your leadership and for the proclamation of September as National Recovery Month. I'm pleased to also recognize our community partners who are leading the way in terms of prevention, intervention, treatment, and support. And first and foremost is our partner, Mercer Island, and the Family Services. I've had the privilege of working with Cindy Goodwin for many years. I'm also pleased to have worked closely with the Communities That Care Coalition, led by Sharon Burrows and Derek Franklin. They're doing very strong, needed work to reduce access to alcohol, marijuana, and other drugs, so that doesn't get in the youth's hands. In addition to individuals having connections to service providers, I also wanted to mention that there are over 200-plus Alcoholic Anonymous and Narcotic Anonymous meetings throughout King County. Furthermore, many individuals and families are connected to mental health organizations such as NAMI, National Alliance on Mental Illness. And others achieve recovery through groups like Smart Recovery, and also with the help of their personal family physician, their family and friends, and their spiritual community. Your proclamation of Recovery Month is important as we join together to promote recovery and celebrate those in recovery. So once again, thank you so much for time on the agenda and the proclamation, and for truly making Mercer Island a positive, safe place to be.
And thank you. Thanks for the work you do. Over to Rich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, I asked the mayor to give me just a couple of seconds to introduce to you not a visitor but a new face in our family. Scott Greenberg is here. He is about to be our new Development Services Director at Mercer Island. Scott comes to us from the city of Burien as the Community Development Director there. And he's had a long history, including a stint as an associate planner here at the city of Mercer Island years ago when we first met. And Kirkland, he's been on the Planning Commission at the city of Issaquah, and for a short time appointed to an expired seat on the council. So he's been on both sides of our table. And he's in the middle of Burien Shoreline Master Program now, certainly knows his way around that territory, and has been very instrumental in Burien's efforts at Town Center redevelopment. So excited to have Scott here. His first day isn't until October 15th, and I don't have any, actually, no expectations for you to say or do anything right now, but you're at the mic, so let her rip, Scott.
Welcome.
There we go. Thank you. I'm looking forward to working with all of you and with the community, and I'll be here in two weeks.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay.
We're very easy to work with. We always listen to staff. I'm sure Rich has told you that. Just no hard questions. You'll enjoy it here.
You have to know you're all planners.
Yes, that makes your job easier, right? Okay, yes. Thanks for coming, Scott, and you really can go anytime you want to. I know, you know, there's a football game going on out there, so.
Okay, we move now to appearances. And so ground rules of appearances, that you'll have three minutes. Please state your name and address as you begin. Speak clearly into the microphone. We traditionally do not respond to comments, but it doesn't mean we're not listening, and we'll certainly be paying attention to what you have to say. So with that, anyone care to begin? Roberta, welcome.
I'm always happy to talk. My name is Roberta Lewandowski. I live at 4740-8670 Southeast, and I was a member of the Sustainability Task Force. So I'm here to express my appreciation that you're looking at the report and recommendations of the task force, and that you'll be considering them when you give staff support for going forward and perhaps during the budget process. I think it was a very good group of people with technical and also policy expertise. They, we really did try to focus on things that you really could do within a year that weren't extremely expensive. Mercer Island has done a lot on sustainability, and I'm very pleased when I learned, from the task force, learned all the range of things that have been done. And I think these recommendations will take us forward for five or 10 years if they're acted upon over time. So thanks for considering them.
Thank you. Ira, welcome.
Ira Appleman, 631383rd Place, Southeast. Every year we hear that resolution of the mayors about hunger, but I guess what always puzzles me is why are we passing resolutions? I'd like to know what the city's plans are for dealing with. I mean, we're coming up against another winter in a bad economy, and we know that the food banks don't have as much food as they need. And how much money is the city allocating to make sure that people are not malnourished during the winter, and also that they don't die of exposure on the streets? I mean, it's one thing to pass resolutions, and what happens is that some people show up in front of the stores to collect donations, and they have, you know, they announce that it's part of the mayor's program. But I'd rather see the council get together with other cities and come up with how much money it would take to make sure that nobody dies of exposure on the street during the winter, or that anybody is terribly malnourished, that they're not terribly malnourished during the winter. So I guess I'd like to see the council take some action. It doesn't sound like it would take that much money, especially if the cities got together and made sure that those bad things don't happen within this county.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up, Jonathan.
My name is Jonathan Harrington. I live at 9514 Southeast 68th Street. And I too would like to thank the council for supporting the creation and activities of the Mercer Island Sustainability Task Force. I especially like to thank Bruce Bassett, Rich Conrad, and the staff support, great staff support from Kirsten Taylor for spearheading this effort. I served on the Energy Conservation Subcommittee. I would like to draw the council's attention to the final Sustainability Policy Task Force Recommendations Report, Recommendation 2A, focused on energy conservation. And I quote, "Mercer Island will take a regional leadership position in the energy and other greenhouse gases, gas emissions reductions within city operations and the broader community." What does regional leadership mean? A good starting point is to look at what other cities are doing, the C7 cities, our peers, and King County. All these jurisdictions do track and report city operations, greenhouse gas emissions by source type. All have medium and long-term greenhouse gas reduction goals. Medium term typically means 2020. That's the number that people are talking about now. And we really need to have specific goals that are achievable within our professional lifetimes. They also have roadmaps, commonly referred to as sustainability action plans, to guide their work. So I hope that the city will devote resources to adopting similar measures. All the pieces are in place to make these things happen. We've been working on them for many years, and all we really need to do is have the will, the resources, and the dedicated staff time to move forward. Thank you very much.
Welcome, Kelly.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Callie Rodolphy, and my address is 343272nd Avenue, Southeast. I want to also recognize and support the efforts of the Sustainability Task Force and the education and the communication that's going to be required to progress, excuse me, and also prosper as a sustainable island. Island Vision is interested in partnering with the city and the schools in reaching the larger community and educating them about the benefits and awareness of sustainability. For example, one of our projects with the city has been the Elite for Green Fair that's usually in April around Earth Day. We also appreciate the goal of developing a sustainability action plan with short-term and also long-term targets, indicators, and looking at ways to measure and gain motivation by tracking our progress. One idea is to look island-wide at energy use, carbon footprint, and making aggregate information available to residents so they can make better decisions in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, we'll close public comments. Thank you all, and particularly, brevity was wonderful this evening. I think anybody used up their full three minutes. Okay, we move now to minutes, right? There's nothing else you needed to do. So we're on to minutes. The study session, regular meeting minutes of September 4th.
I move to approve the study session and regular meeting minutes of September 4th, 2012.
Second.
Any changes, comments? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Minutes are passed. And we move on to a whopping large consent calendar, and I've got my fingers crossed here that we can actually hold this together. So anybody want to pull stuff off the consent calendar? Ooh, hallelujah. Okay. Mike, are you sure?
I looked and looked and looked, and dug, and I couldn't find anything.
Oh, boy. Yes. Ronan and Aaron are out there breathing sighs of relief right now. Okay. Do I need an emotion?
I move that we approve the consent calendar as is.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Ah, Anna, Ron.
It should be noted that on those items, there are tremendous savings under budget on most of these projects, if not all the projects. Staff, it really, I don't want the fact that we didn't debate this to go, to let that go unnoticed. There's really very nice numbers that came in on all three projects.
Thanks for seeing that, Dan. Yeah, we're really proud of the engineering staff. Yeah, nice job.
Yeah, well, and I almost pulled number four to do the same thing Dan did, but particularly the pedestrian signal project, that is a huge improvement, and I've got a lot of really positive feedback associated with that. So again, nicely done.
Thank you all.
And of course, saying to the Youth and Family Services group, that's wonderful on the grant.
The staff is pulling it out. Derek, thank you.
We can thank them.
We move on to Agenda Item 8, Agenda Bill 4770, Sustainability Task Force Final Recommendations. Kirsten.
Good evening. Mayor and councilmembers. Kirsten Taylor, DSG Administrative Services Manager and City Ombudsman. I am here with Task Force Chair, Don Cohen, to present the final recommendations of the Sustainability Policy Task Force. Mayor Bassett announced the task force on March 5th, and I would like to introduce Chair Don Cohen to say a few words about the task force and members. He will also be available to answer any questions at the end of the presentation.
Since everything else went so rapidly, I assume I have that extra time. No, I think I was cut off the last time for exceeding my limit, but anyway. Yeah. Mayor and members of the council, Don Cohen, 8331 Southeast 61st Street. My wife and I have lived on Mercer Island since 1984, and I've taken the 202 bus from the south end to downtown Seattle since the second day we moved on Mercer Island. The first day, and that was about it for me. But for 28 years, I've been taking the 202. And our kids, and I put that in quotes because they're in their late 30s, grew up here, and they live out of town with our four grandchildren. I hope that they'll move back sometime, but whether or not they do, when they come and visit here, they like to see that Mercer Island is a community that continues to value and enhance what we call sustainability. Now, as a lot of you know, I've worked on different city matters over 20 years, since 1990. I was involved initially with Citizens to Preserve Pioneer Park to keep it from becoming a golf course. I was on the Planning Commission for 10 years, a number of those years as Chair. Followed that up several years after getting off that, being on the Open Space Conservancy Trust and chaired that for a few years. The council appointed me to be Chair of the Stakeholder Committee on the Parks and Open Space Bond and Levy Matters, which some of you served on along with me. So over the years, I believe that I've kind of chosen, with some care for my point of view, the issues that I was particularly interested in to get involved in, and I've come before you, other than with any reports that were required, I've come before you relatively infrequently, and only when I have felt it was really important. This is one of those. You have the Agenda Bill, you have the Task Force Report, you'll hear more from Kirsten, you've heard from some of the people in the audience who are on the task force. And you will hear, and you've read in the report, that the task force, in a very short period of time, accomplished a huge amount. 14 weeks, and six full task force meetings, a dozen subcommittee meetings, multiple staff meetings, meetings, and calls, the mayor, the staff, city manager, myself, for preparation, debriefing, preparation for the next meeting. It was a huge effort, and the task force members, huge, huge effort. You know many of them, tremendous contributors, tremendous background and expertise. And believe me, mine was at the way low end of that scale as far as sustainability knowledge when I got on there. But people who are educators, planners, architects, utility experts, marketing specialists, environmental policy analysts, and doers, councilmembers, Sen and Braun, and of course, Mayor Bassett, great contributor, staff. Kirsten was recognized before, particularly, among other things, stepping in with Tim Stewart's illness. Jenny, I don't know how to pronounce her last name.
No.
Jenny No, an intern who assisted Kirsten. And here's an important point. These weren't just crazy environmentalists. Couple of the people on there, the Vice President for Ballpark Operations of the Mariners, who talked about and provided data, hard data, on what the Mariners have done, composting, lighting, things like that, and how it has affected their bottom line as well as made them feel good. Many, 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 many hundreds of thousands of dollars net to the positive a year on their budget doing these things. Also a specialist in sustainability for Microsoft. So my point is that the task force had knowledge, it had energy, passion, and commitment, but also had real-world balance, including financial considerations. And these people, all of them that I've mentioned, all that you've seen in the report, all of them collectively believe that these are significant issues for Mercer Island today and in the future, for our children, our grandchildren, our friends, the community, and in a leadership role for the region and perhaps the broader community. So each of these task force recommendations is important, and Kirsten will go through these and summarize them for you, but none is more important than trying to make some room for a dedicated staff position to coordinate and help implement these things. The task force felt uniformly that if that is not possible, then at very best, these efforts will be delayed substantially. So that is the most important thing. We appreciate the council's consideration of these recommendations, and you saw in the report that the task force stands ready to continue working with you on this, whether in that role or in some other role. And I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity of being on that, and I'm not going to welcome any questions because I think my knowledge base is, you know, better served at the level that I just summarized than it is on the details. So thank you.
Don, thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. The draft recommendations were presented to council in June with the anticipation that the task force would reconvene over the summer to work on any areas where council might have concerns or request further information. Council did not make any requests, so the final recommendations this evening are the same as council previewed in June, with the addition of the task force being invited to attend the council meeting to join the presentation of the report. The task force was given the mission of developing recommended sustainability policy that will direct the city's actions and priorities in being a sustainable city in the near term and well into the future. The task force identified policy topics and action items that would have the greatest near-term opportunity to reduce the island's environmental impact, save money both for city operations and for residents, and improve islanders' quality of life. The task force was encouraged to first address low-cost and modest effort methods to increase sustainability on the island. The task force recognized that transportation and land use are at the heart of sustainability and the most difficult to implement, but agreed to initially work on issues where Mercer Island can move the needle and make immediate local positive impacts. While Mercer Island is a small community that by size alone can't have a huge impact on global climate change, resource demand, or future growth pressures, Mercer Island citizens have broad reach and the ability to influence far beyond this community. City leadership can develop a local culture of sustainability that influences behavior globally. So the task force identified five initial focus areas in the field of sustainability. There are waste reduction, energy and water conservation, yard toxins, green building, and sustainability education and communications. And the report includes a rec- And the report includes a recommended policy statement for each focus area. I won't go over these policies in detail, but would be happy to answer any questions council might have. The report also gives a brief background statement and offers a list of potential action items to inform the policy intent in each category. The potential action items for each focus area are categorized into community education and outreach, incentive-based programs, city operations, and code changes. Following this format allowed the task force to retain the detailed work of the group while focusing on developing the policy statements. The Sustainability Policy Task Force strongly believes that the city council can make strides to lead and incentivize our city and community to make great efforts towards a sustainable future. To implement these policies, the Sustainability Policy Task Force recommendations to council are to create a dedicated staff position that will work with resource conservation within the city and educational outreach in the community. The dedicated staff position is a critical recommendation, as the actions contained in this report and the progress Mercer Island has made will be limited without the focused effort of such a position. The next recommendation is to approve the policy statements set forth in this document and incorporate this policy framework into all Mercer Island planning and policy documents such as the Mercer Island Conference of Plan, the Utilities Plans, and the Biennial Budget. And staff has highlighted existing and proposed sustainability action items for council consideration in the 2013-14 budget. Next, the third recommendation is to direct staff to develop a six-year sustainability action plan. If council approves a sustainability position in the 13-14 budget, the six-year sustainability action plan will be an early work product in 2013. And finally, the recommendation is for council to take legislative actions by the council to foster a culture of sustainability in the community. One of the items that the task force was very interested in is having council look at passing a plastic bag ban. Council has directed staff to return with proposed legislative actions at the 2013 council planning session. The task force targeted topics and goals that they believe could bring considerable changes with relatively little investment. The task force recognizes that these are low-hanging fruit and that larger issues such as transportation, land use, food policy, and affordable housing must be brought into the discussion in the future. The mayor and council may want to consider reconvening this task force on an annual basis or creating a sustainability commission to review the progress of the city and community in implementing these policies and to give further guidance for the city's sustainability The council is being asked to receive the report this evening with no further action necessary. We would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Okay, open for questions. We're going to just fly through this evening. Mr. Grady, and then Dan.
Thanks to all, Don, Kirsten, and the whole group. You guys did a great job in such a short period of time, and that is not an easy task. I do have a kind of a fundamental question, though, because in the formation of the group, the focus was really on two key areas, land use and transportation. And I understand that, you know, with those two comes many complexities in terms of being able to address sustainability. But as I reread the recommendations, I have a hard time calling out what in the transportation arena specifically can we do from your perspective based on all the work that you've done?
The task force decided to not address transportation because it's such a big issue. So these recommendations and the focus of the task force were on things that could be done short-term, again, with relatively little cost.
So the understanding is within a 12 to 18-month timeframe, and it's not just in the city operations and maintenance, but also island-wide?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, your point's a good one, and I wouldn't want to discount that at all, but the hope is that we shoot for some low-hanging fruit this year. If this is a successful process, there's a next-year review and similar effort that would potentially lead to the kinds of things you're talking about. Dan?
I also appreciate all the work that was done by Don and the rest of the task force, and don't have any real issue with anything that's in the task force report. My concern is what happens next, because we have a tendency in government, and as in any organization, that you generate these reports and then they sort of start collecting dust. And I noticed that the intention is, the next thing to do, and what you put in your PowerPoint was that we're now going to prepare a six-year action plan, which to me is a little bit of another planning document. I'm just, I'm concerned that, as with every effort, that what you need early on to get people's attention is some quick wins, and instead of reports and plans. So I would hope that at the same time that, if council approves a position, which I understand is a condition to making any of this happen, but if council does approve the position, that I'm hopeful that he or she who takes the coordinator position can quickly bring back to the council some ideas on how we can move this forward. At the same time, they're looking long-term, I'd like them to look short-term, whether it's the plastic bag issue or other issues that are out there. The other thing I would encourage the staff to consider is creating effectively like a sustainability report card, so that we have something very tangible that the city can point to to evaluate its efforts on this. Otherwise, I mean, I think we can all look at the plans we have out there for transportation, for parks, and I can almost guarantee you that no one in this council can sit here and tell you what is in those plans or where we are in terms of achieving anything in those plans, because just by definition, they're so voluminous that they tend to get lost. So you almost need to have something much simpler, much more tangible, that people can relate to and say, yes, we're making progress, or no, we're not making progress.
Debbie?
Again, reiterating the support, and again, the fact that you had so many of the task force members show up this evening, I think is a true testament to probably a very strong sense of team that was developed there and much respected. One of the questions that I'd like to have elaborated on is this concept of the dedicated staff position, because I know we talked about whether or not that would be something that would be in conjunction with the communications coordinator, because so much of what this role would evolve into is, I believe, around awareness and education, which was one of your points. So how do we ensure that if we look at that, we're not looking at a position that acts somewhat in isolation, but is really a part of the fabric and woven into the greater city and community operations overall? So that would be one question. Then, I very much like Deputy Mayor Grouse's suggestion about having some sort of report card that is understandable, that is succinct, and something that can measure progress, because while six years is important for us to have a vision, I think there's also a sense of excitement and momentum that comes from seeing progress early on. And, you know, just like children like to see a little seed grow and see those roots and see the first sprouts, I think too, a lot of the excitement in the community can be built by seeing how some of the short-term initiatives can really impact our quality of life.
Good evening, Noel Treet, Deputy City Manager. To answer the first part of your question about how we can basically ensure that this,
if we have this dedicated staff position, that that person can be successful, one component of that is that this position will be housed in the city manager's office. And this sustainability work is something that Rich and I know is very important and that we need to help move forward, and I think by having that person in the city manager's office, that will help in terms of their work with the rest of our departments. The other piece of that is, we are going to be convening a sustainability working committee within the city with representatives from the various departments which touch sustainability issues, and that'll be a forum where we can help pull people together and ensure that the new coordinator is in the best spot to coordinate that work and get all of our players engaged in that work.
And to the education component of that, this literally will be the same person. We are assured we can find somebody that has both good communication skills and all the various media and techniques for public information and is steeped in some of the issues and practices and programs of sustainability. Probably somebody coming out of a grad school with a little bit of, you know, onsite or work experience, and this person will literally be doing both. And so we're taking a position that's already funded in the budget on the communications side with this other half that's the sustainability piece.
Thank you. Jane?
I was a member of the Sustainability Subcommittee, and it was a very interesting process. I was stunned to think of how much was accomplished in such a short time. At the onset, I thought it was an impossible task. 14 people with all very strong personalities, doing, down in the weeds, as we said, and up at policy level and going all over. It was quite an interesting group, and I think Kirsten did a wonderful job and Don pulling us back together. I think the communication, I was on the Education and Communications Subcommittee of this group, and I think it is the most essential part of the work that was done, which pulls together all of the different elements. Also, we have a lot to celebrate and communicate that we are already doing, which I think is very important. We need to come out with the report card showing where we are and then, so we can have a baseline and measure progress as we move ahead. I think the Sustainability Task Force would probably be very willing to come together every six months or every year to give the city a grade, perhaps, on how we're doing on the various aspects of the plan, much like we do on the six-year Transportation Improvement Plan, something where we routinely look at all the parts of it and figure out how we've done and where we need to go next. But I think communication is really essential, and having that person in the city manager's office doing communication for the city and being the sustainability person is a perfect match.
Antoni?
As everyone has said, thank you to the task force. It was wonderful to work with you all, it was an honor. And to Dan and Debbie's point, I think if anything, the action plan, a little bit, we're seeing it a little bit as a transportation improvement plan, like a tip or a SIP, so that we have really a roadmap to where we're going. Because as you said, Debbie, we want to have these little gems or seeds grow. I think everybody was willing to be a gardener and throwing in their seeds, and everybody wanted their idea and their topic to be the first ones. So I don't think we're going to have any problem getting certain things, you know, getting some early wins and getting some things started. I think we were trying to make sure that we had a plan so we could literally lay out some things that were either long-term or some things that we could accomplish right away, so that we knew they were coming up and that it would be something that we could look forward to and be in the budget and plan ahead. So I definitely look forward to seeing a lot of that was incorporated into this plan come to fruition, hopefully sooner than later, but certainly some of it's going to take time. And in tough budget times, we understand that, you know, it'll take time, but we're, the momentum and the enthusiasm and all those gardeners for those ideas are certainly out there. Thank you.
There was a lot of talk of weeds and seeds, but absolutely not about herbicides.
Hey, Rich, I might remind the group that back in the Dark Ages, I convinced Mr. Jenke to approve goals for the city. So we actually do have goals of 80% of 2005 by 2050.
Yes.
And he complained about that, and I leaned over and I said, "Don't worry, we'll be dead by then anyway." Those are far-reaching goals, and we've talked, you know, many a year about, you know, how do we get a short-term report card out? And this gets to your comment, Jane, which quite frankly, we need to do, because a lot has been done since then.
Actually, I'll bet what you'll hear when Chip here in a minute does his dashboard report, you guys actually did give us direction to have some sustainability dashboard criteria and metrics, and he'll report on them.
Yeah, but I wanted to echo Jane's comment, because much has been done since then, and much, you know, remains to be done, which we'll talk about in excruciating detail, I'm sure, at some point.
Debbie, and then Mike.
Well, I appreciate all the volunteer hours put toward this. It's not quite my vision, certainly my vision isn't making the administrative arm of the city heavier. I mean, that's not, that's not in the direction of efficiency that I want to go, and that's not where I see in saving money. I don't see how the city's going to save money by adding additional headcount to a relatively, well, to a stable community. So, you know, we can look at what we have already in place. You know, the report card, one of the first things I did when I became a council member was with Dr. Harrington and looked over his ICLI data input, and that's our report card. So, you know, since I've been on council, well, I won't go there, but you look at this dashboard report, and whenever I talk about the dashboard report, there are many metrics that just common sense, good management, criteria, analysis, that all of our directors possess, will see that, well, that doesn't really measure the right thing, or as with any measurement, if you're not careful, you actually don't accomplish what you want to do, and you may do more harm. And I think there are some measurements in the dashboard, a system that we already have in place. Again, I sincerely appreciate all the volunteer hours with this, but I see this as another level of bureaucracy. I mean, something just core to my heart that I try not to do in this position as council member. So, you know, as far as the additional FTE, the additional person, you know, the question has to, where, we have roughly 172 employees. What employee is not required, what employee, what position would we replace this, with this sustainability person? We also are in competition, you know, the IT, we've recently had presentations for up to an additional three IT folks, and then you've got the communications coordinator. And I don't like the option of raising taxes to accommodate all these additional folks. So, appreciate what you did, but I think it's unsustainable to think that we're going to add additional headcount for a sustainability person.
Thanks. Debbie, and Antoni?
And thanks, Mike. I can respect your approach, and part of what I've been thinking about this is, yes, it's a balance between here and now, but it's also looking toward the future. So I grew up on this island, here I am in my midlife, and I'm hoping that I will be here at the end of my life. And what I want to look back on is knowing that my time on council was spent not just in the immediacy, but also in the long-term, and looking at the effect and the efficiencies that actually can be gained and addressed by talking about and starting to look at these issues here and now. One of the great examples that I picked up was, and we didn't go through it, was the pump station on First Hill. Was it 35% energy reduction by replacing some of the equipment there? In my mind, that is about efficiency and that is about sustainability. So efficiency, yes, but it's also measured over a certain amount of time, and it requires forethought and it requires planning and an appropriate use of energy and resources. The other point would be to the communications coordinator. Again, my understanding is that this position is in combination with the communications coordinator, this is not in addition to. I won't jump into the discussion on the IT personnel, because I think it is not three people that's being recommended at this point, although there is additional headcount coming on. So when I look at this, and I look at the, you know, the city's convinced me it's integrated into its greater operations, it's, I think, indicative of the room that we have as a community to be smart across. It's, I think, indicative of the room that we have as a community to be smart across the board, and it's very important to me, and I think a number of my cohort here on the island, who want to look back twenty, thirty, forty years from now and know that we made some smart moves, and Mercer Island is as good then, if not better, than it is now, and I think this is a really important first step.
Donna?
I think Debbie said it really, really well. And just two nice comments. You know, I think we are already doing some sustainable things, but I think we—the point is that—the task force's point, our point is that we want to move the needle. And without adding staff, I—you ask what employees would we replace, and I would say, what work would you replace that the employees that we have are—what work that they're already doing would we take off of their plate? Because already with the FTEs that the council has cut over the past few years, less staff is doing more, and to add additional sustainability work to their full plates probably is not doable and certainly not fair. And again, I think a community value that we have heard is that—is for sustainability, and so, you know, I think having this small step with a part-time sustainability person makes a lot of sense. Also, on the—from the bottom-line point of view, Debbie gives the example of the energy saving, and as Don mentioned, you know, these—are large-scale savings that can be—that can be seen across the board. We heard that from the Mariners in a really large way, from Microsoft. We can see that in many different fields, and so, I don't think—I think this is an investment in our community, in the broader—in the broader society.
Okay. Mike?
Well, you know, that's a good—the pump station, the pump house, thirty-five percent more efficient. I mean, that's what our managers do. We don't need to study that or have a task force sustainability coordinator book that as a savings. You know, that's what we do. We replace things on a regular basis. You know, I have—I have somewhat of an issue on that, but we replace things—I won't say on a regular basis. When we replace things, we look at what the market—what engineering products are out there, and of course, we're going to do an—any director's going to do an analysis on thirty-five percent savings that's so much more than the twenty-five percent savings and do a value analysis on that. That's what we do. That's in our blood. It's in the director's blood. That's what they do. Why we need to add additional level of bureaucracy, I don't know. And that's a perfectly example of what will happen. So, that thirty-five percent savings, which we—just good management, we would have done anyways, will get booked as a sustainability savings. That's not right. That's not right. This—the sustainability—you know, what I see the sustainability person doing is producing a lot of PR paper, which of course, won't get booked as a sustainability negative, but that's another issue, so. It needs—it's—it's in our blood. It should be in our blood. It's the way we do business. We don't need to add extra level of bureaucracy to it.
Mike?
Mike, you know, I can appreciate that perspective, and one of the things that we talked about many moons ago, when we first kicked this topic off, was setting up a green fund whereby savings would actually be earmarked toward that fund, and then that would help pay for additional FTEs or other activities. So, I mean, that's something we can talk about during the budget time that I think might be an alternative or a compromise to getting additional help to get these things going. I do have to say personally that having headed up a number of green teams in various organizations, the volunteer stuff wanes off very quickly, and after a year or two, unless you have a dedicated person whose sole responsibility is to work to the directors and, you know, the city manager and the council to get this stuff done, it really doesn't get done. And that's why I asked about kind of the timeframe for some of these recommendations. I think—I think, you know, this provides a great mechanism to kind of give us another kickstart to get things going, but there are a lot of opportunities out there that we, as a city, can take advantage of with King County Climate Cities, Star Communities, various grants and other programs, where if we had a more formalized body that can ensure and track all of this information, we could take advantage of a lot of federal, local, and NGO-type grant opportunities that would then bring in revenue to the city and help pay for some of these FTEs. So, I'm certainly willing to look at any and all alternatives to fund those, but I do have to say, based on some personal experience, that unless somebody's in charge and somebody's responsible, the volunteer stuff wanes very quickly. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. So, Rich points out to me that, you know, we tonight are accepting this report and certainly thanking the folks who have been involved in it. We will have the opportunity, as we get into the budget, to hear more about exactly how staff has integrated these measures and make these decisions about where we're actually going to spend money. So, you will have plenty of opportunity to weigh in further on this. And there's nothing else? I'll add my thank you to Don, Roberta, and Jonathan, who are here, and to the other folks who perhaps are watching us on TV. But, great group, and I'm endlessly pleased at the—at the work that was done and the effort that was put in. So, thank you, and Kirsten particularly, thank you to you two. Wouldn't have—wouldn't have worked without you being the one who made it all come together. So, thank you. Okay. With that, we move on to Agenda Bill 4763, Study Session Broadcasting. Ally, welcome.
Good evening, council. For the record, I'm Ally Speet, City Clerk. At the January 2012 Planning Session, Councilmember Sero proposed recording study sessions and broadcasting them on MITV, which is the city's cable station. After your discussion, we asked staff to research the costs associated with recording and broadcasting. As you know, study sessions are traditionally held from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. before the first meeting of the month. The topics are usually informal of a nature and do not necessitate council direction or decision. In 2010, four city sessions were held. In 2011, seven were held, and so far this year, we've had four, plus tonight's joint meeting. After speaking with the vendor we use for broadcasting the council meetings on Mercer Island TV, we determined that it's unlikely that there will be any increase in costs for those services, as our vendor shows up at 4:00 o'clock every day to make sure the whole system's up and running. The IS manager and I asked our audio and video recording vendor to come into the council chambers and probably troubleshoot with us how we could make the roundtable setup work for broadcasting study sessions. As the agenda bill mentioned, the equipment that we have is archaic, I think is the best word. We—we have pretty much been piecing and patching it together for the last few years. However, they did come up with a workaround, which would be to add a mixer and microphones that would get power off this podium here. And that would allow each one of you to have a microphone at the dais. You might have to double up if there's some staff that are there—I'm sorry, at the tables, so that we could record it. The cameras, of course, are not in the most ideal positions, but we would be able to capture as much as possible. So, the total for purchasing those, that equipment, and for installing it would be $6,633, and there are funds available currently in the Technology and Equipment Fund to cover these expenditures. That's all the information I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Jane?
So, in your agenda bill, you said that you're going to be coming back to us at some point in the near future to replace all the equipment?
At some point, we're going to need to, and I say near future, meaning probably five years from now. There is one piece of equipment that we do need to replace, which we have the funds to do, and that will tide us over for probably three to five more years. That's a piece of equipment that, if it failed today, we would have to replace the whole thing, so we just need to replace it. They don't have a backup for us anymore. It's the oldest one available.
As I recall, it is not included in our proposed CIP in this biennium.
Correct. It was included in the—
Let's get the name. What is it? Just so we—
It's a widget back there. It's a—
It's one of the widgets, a widget.
It's—I don't know, because I'm not as up in those terms. It's—it's—
Video control equipment.
Yeah, I mean, it's the audio piece. It's the main box that allows us to run all of the microphones in the room and have it go through the video system.
There's a person downstairs right now screaming out the name of the box.
So, there was a proposal four years ago to revamp the city council chambers, and that was part of that proposal.
And if we change the format of the study sessions that we set up here and just set up the tables down there for whoever else is going to participate in the study session, then none of this would be needed?
Correct. Not—the mixer and the eight microphones that are proposed with the six thousand—the sixty-six hundred. We would probably get maybe one or two more standing mics, handheld mics, just to allow for.
I guess—I mean, I'm not—I'm not a technology expert, but it strikes me, it's a little bit strange, that if we've got eight microphones up here, which must be run by a mixer, why they can't just run something off of that mixer and support eight microphones somewhere else?
Because we're—we're maxed out on the channels, so we have sixteen channels, and we—
But I understand, but these channels aren't being used.
Right. So, we'd have to unplug all the microphones and then bring them out and plug them into a mixer out here, which means then when the study session is over, we'd have to unplug them and put them all back down, which is an option. We would just need to build in more time in between study sessions and the meeting starting to do that. It's not my ideal choice as the person who has to facilitate all of that, but, you know, it's—
That's what I got Rich for.
And I think you could just leave that to council members. If they don't bring their mic up here, they don't turn it off.
I think that makes perfect sense.
The other thing, and I'm just—the connections that are below you, where your microphone does plug into, those were put in in 1989, so they're—they're a little fragile, so we're trying to be careful with those. So, the vendor had thought the plugging and unplugging over and over again may put some stress on those, so.
Okay. Others?
No, other than I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
If we're through with questions. I'd like to move to direct staff to begin recording and broadcasting study sessions.
Second?
And I think that's it.
Okay. That was a—it's a—
That was an assumption that they buy the equipment.
I'd like to make an amendment on that.
Okay.
I'd like to amend less the appropriation required.
So, just to be clear, you're adding less the appropriation required to—
Actually, I shouldn't say required, less the appropriation, less the appropriation.
Mr. Mayor? Well, I—let's see if we get a second before—yeah, we go anywhere with this. Okay.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Grous. So, I went online and I looked at a bunch of different—we can—we can think outside the box a little bit to save money, two issues on that. You know, there are council members—there are councils out there that—actually, there are many councils out there that—that televise the study sessions, which is a fantastic step in the right direction in transparency and getting getting our discussion in front of the population more than it is even now. And there are several, let's see, some Amish, the commission meetings are televised, same as council meetings, our study sessions and commission meetings. Redmond has the relaxed format, ISQL Nothing, CTAC, study sessions are televised the same as council meetings, i.e. on that dais right here. And boy, do I hate putting those tables back. So, I think this is a good way to save $7,000 on just having the study sessions with us here and whoever's going to make the presentation. And I—I don't think it sacrifices the relaxed format at all. And the second thing has to do, from a budget perspective, is that although this is near and dear to my heart, near and dear to my heart is the budget process, and I don't—I think if we have extra funds available, well, at the end of—and I don't—certainly don't want to penalize any directors, but at the end of the budget, you know, that—that's the carryover to the next year, and this project, this expenditure of $6,000, gets rated, as with all the other different good ideas. So, there's two reasons for that amendment that I did. One is, I think we can make it work by changing the way we do the study sessions, i.e. as Deputy Mayor alluded to. And two, if there's extra funds available, then I'd like to push that to the biennial budget analysis, and as with all good projects, they should stand on their own and compete for limited funds.
Hey, Rich, you wanted to weigh in, or Chip, or maybe you and Chip, we were sort of sending—
Well, I—I now more fully understand what Mike's suggestion is about not spending the money to accommodate work going on down there, let's keep the work up here. So, somewhat different than I thought originally, but while—while we can't—Chip, do we literally need to appropriate dollars?
No.
Okay. So, the authority—
It's already done.
Yes, exactly. That's what I thought. The authority to spend the dollars exists in the fund if you tell us you want the work. We don't have to do any sort of formal budget action to make it happen. You tell us you want to do broadcasting of study sessions from that position, and we need to spend something short of six or seven thousand dollars for audio, we'll just do it. Is that correct?
So, if I understand what you're saying, is that you're suggesting that to achieve what Mike's suggesting, it might be best to change the amendment to say something different? Is that where you're—
Well, I guess—I guess maybe that's the case. What Mike was referring to was the appropriation required on the face of the agenda bill.
Yes.
And technically, that isn't needed. There isn't an appropriation that is needed. Maybe Mike might want to rephrase his motion to be simply not to expend the sixty-six hundred dollars on additional audio equipment and bring study session audio back up to the dais, something to that effect. You're talking more about how we do the business and why we don't need to spend the money, not about the appropriation.
So, I'll change my amendment to "without expending additional funds."
Okay. Does that still have a second?
Yes, it does.
All right.
I think this is a good example of something we could try first. If it is not acceptable and we find that we would really like to have the extra equipment, then we could vote to do that at some later stage, but I'd be happy to support Mike's amendment.
Yeah, same here.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
You are so practical.
But I have to stick up for Ally. My main concern was, you know, if it's going to impact her ability to make it work, you know, I'll leave that to Ally and to Rich and Noel and others to—
Well, I understood that if we weren't going to do it down there, study sessions will be run from the dais in exactly the mode we're in right now, which would be a challenge for how we just did a joint meeting with the school board. We wouldn't be able to do it that way. We wouldn't be able to broadcast.
Well, it's kind of baby down there.
Yeah. But I didn't hear in that that you're expecting us to somehow reconfigure these mics. I—I think this is very impractical to even talk about, that this is just not going to work.
And in fact, this would presumably make it a little bit easier for Ally in the sense that there'd be less tables down there to deal with.
All about Ally.
The table—putting the tables away is not a big thing. I've been doing it for eleven years, so I'm okay with that. I think, you know, if you want to change the format to allow for not having to expend any funds, we can definitely try it and see if it works from up there, and you have the ability to change it.
We do have the ability even now to take a couple of handheld mics, plus probably wire the podium mic, so that you could have three people mic'd up down there if—if you had three or four people at a table and a panel that are talking to you. We could do something, but that's about it.
Yeah. Okay.
I imagine we can work out the details afterwards, but just to—I wanted to just point out two things about study sessions. One is that it's an opportunity for city council members to really ask, quote-unquote, ask those stupid questions, and so, as they're digging in deep to make potentially new information or really getting down to the weeds of things that we don't necessarily address from up here on the dais during a regular meeting. So, specifying in some way, across the bottom of the screen, that it's a study session versus a council meeting, because again, I think the—the point of those is to really allow council members to dig in deep on a topic. So, if there's somehow that we can make it clear that it's not, you know, during meeting, then again, while there are no stupid questions, just so that people don't—the council members don't feel like that they can't ask a question because out of, you know, fear of of looking uninformed. And then the second one, I hope people will be flexible in—if we have to address the timing, and that maybe we don't want to all eat on camera so much that we add a couple fifteen minutes to our—to a buffer zone in between a study session and a council meeting. of 15 minutes to our, to a buffer zone in between a study session and a council meeting, might be a good idea.
Okay, other, thank you. Other comments? All right, we're at vote on the amendment, which is to add without expending additional funds, excuse me, to the end of the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. Any further discussion on the main amendment? Oh, sorry, the main motion. All right, motion is direct staff to begin recording and broadcasting study sessions without expending additional funds. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Mike, nice win.
Wow, thank you.
You're honor roll.
For the community.
You're honor roll.
Book that as sustainability or savings.
Okay, we're on to the dashboard report, we're an hour and 10 in, are people okay with rolling, keep rolling? Jane says no. Okay, as long as you need, but five, okay, five minutes will reconvene.
Stop what's going.
Okay, we're back. And moving to agenda bill 4756, 2011 Mercer Island Dashboard Report. Chip Quarter, welcome.
Good evening. For the record, Chip Quarter, your finance director. Okay, 2011 Dashboard Report, what is it? For those that are new to the council, it is, I call it a collection of 35 top-tier indicators. Technically, it's got more than that. There's these sub-indicators under each, under some of the top-tier indicators, but it's meant to give you kind of a scatter graph of how the city's doing overall across the six priorities of government. And we, at the request of the council from last year, have made a change, and so we've included a carbon footprint, carbon emissions, we're tracking the change in that, is in the environmental stewardship section, and I'll touch on that particular measure tonight. And so, that's the one significant change to the model. There's also, as I've included the past few years, a report card summary, if you don't want to read all the detail, just read the short, the Reader's Digest version, that's on pages three through eight. And I attempt to give a grade, if you will, very good, good, improving, or needs attention to each of the things, each of the indicators, and to kind of draw your attention, especially to those that maybe need some attention. What I've done is, we don't have time to go through every single indicator, and I'm going to ignore all the survey indicators because Ian Stewart went over those a few council meetings ago with you. So, I have kind of picked, in my view, are some really interesting measures. If I were in your shoes, I would find these really interesting, they tell an interesting story. But I will feel, as we go through, feel free to pop, you know, pop in with questions on that particular measure, and then when I wrap up, if you have any questions on any of the other measures, ask away. First one is our second indicator, crime prevention effectiveness, and this tracks violent and property crime rates relative to other eastside cities. It's a, what's called part one crimes per thousand population. Now, it's hard to look at those numbers, but the bottom line is simply this, that you look at Mercer Island and it's number two on that list. Everything is ranked in terms of the 2011 column. And when you kind of look at that and wonder, well, what, why, why is that, you think about the location of Mercer Island itself, you think about the demographics of Mercer Island, very high median income, very highly educated, and what separates Mercer Island from Sammamish is that interstate, just slightly to the north of us, that invites a higher crime rate. Sammamish does not deal with a higher crime rate. Sammamish is very similar to Mercer Island otherwise. And you'll see relative to King County, average of the bottom, it's, we're a typical, very residential community. Not to cast aspersions at Redmond or Issaquodah, Bellevue, Cookland, but they have major commercial sectors. We do not. Commercial sectors invite higher crime rates. You know what? This is not the presentation that I saved, it's missing all these bullet points I had at the bottom. Oh, well, we'll just, we'll just go through it. I'd added some bullet points for your benefit. The next measure is traffic safety effectiveness. This is under priority one, the number one priority of government, and it's looking at your traffic accident rate, expressed in number of accidents per thousand population. Again, Mercer Island in 2011 is second relative to this group of cities, and if you were to exclude I-90, and that comprises 50% of our accidents on average, 51% technically, we'd be really close to hair above Sammamish. And so, I-90 makes a really significant difference. Fire suppression effectiveness, oh, sorry.
Please tell me why we include I-90. I mean, this, it says right here, this report is for the staff and for the city council. What happens on I-90, by and far, I have no influence on it.
I agree.
Why?
Because to do a fair comparison, I'd have to be able to exclude I-90 and 405 from the other comparable cities, and I don't have that data that allows me to exclude them.
Well, you know, that begs another point, why we compare, and I, I'll get on my horse again on this, why we compare ourselves to the other jurisdictions? It should be the trend analysis, but...
I try to do both.
Well, I mean, so, I can't tell if that's a positive trend because it's polluted with I-90 stuff, or it's because of our traffic rates on the island. So, I mean, it's for the staff, it's for me, ah, get I-90 out of there. If I could. That, of course, takes the full counsel, and I'm not directing, I'm just suggesting.
And on page 10, I do include, I didn't adjust the metric, but I do show you the breakdown of the number of accidents for 2007 through 2011 at the very bottom of page 10. And by the way, I should mention, in your packet, the state was really slow at giving me all the traffic accident information. I just literally got, any report, it's through October. Just the other day, I finally got through the year end, and I have the updated page, if you're interested, for the council. They can hand it to Councilmember Zero. Again, this is, what's going around is through the year end, what's in your packet is only through October. That's the best I had at that point in time. Fire suppression effectiveness, looking at your annual fire loss, it's dressed in dollars per thousand population. And again, comparing us to other cities and trying to look at a period of time, a five-year period of time for Mercer Island, you'll see in 2011, again, we're second, can't seem to come in first, we were first last year. And what's interesting about this is when you look at 2008, you go, holy cow, what happened there? $140,000, that's when we had that $2.7 million fire loss of a waterfront home. And that is very infrequent occurrence, and I ran the numbers for you that, whoops, not that one, in your packet, I ran the numbers for you that shows excluding that fire loss, you know, we look really, really good in that area. We ended up being number one for that group of cities. Risk management, this is actually my personal favorite measure in the dashboard report. This is looking at our insurance claims filed over the past five years, it's a rolling five-year total, and we're compared to two groups. And the reason for that is, up until 2009, we were part of what's called Group Three Cities, it's measured a number of worker hours, 250,000 to 400,000 hours per year. We finally went past that threshold in 2009, and we bumped up to Group Four Cities, so I provide a comparison to both. The point I want to focus your attention on is the trend for Mercer Island, it has gotten, gotten better from '07 through '11. That is significant. Pay atten, when you really focus on claims, focus mostly on frequency, the number of claims rather than severity. Severity is important, but frequency is more important by comparison. Here, I focus on this, the continuation on risk management, is when you kind of drill down and look where, these are the top six areas for the Group Four Cities. And you'll see in the first three, street maintenance, police, and sewer utility, we are significantly better than the Group Four average. Great news there, including the sewer utility. We've been working on that one to get that to where it's at right now. The water utility is the one that stands out, that is about two times the Group Four average and needs some attention. We use this data, I've used this data with the utility board, I've used it with the council in the past, to justify, to make the case for additional capital in terms of, previously the sewer utility, but also in the water utility, and also on the maintenance side, and for what's been done there. But that's really good news. That's our one area of concern is the water utility. Am I sensing a question?
What are those claims, the type of claims, or what are utility claims?
Water main break, for example.
That's kind of what I thought. What is our trend in the last four years? I'm hoping that trend is that we were...
I didn't bring that piece of paper with me. It has improved, I just can't give you the data, it's not fresh in my mind.
I think we saw that in, I thought we saw that in the packet.
Yeah, but the detailed breakdown by type of claim is not in your information.
It continues to be an area of concern. I would agree with you, what we want to do is have our crews out there flushing lines and checking valves and making sure that they operate, but when you get a, when you get a water main break and it floods somebody's basement, you get a claim. And, or if it takes out their landscaping out in their front yard, you get a claim. And that's what Chip's trying to say, is we, we need to continue to invest in our water lines, our infrastructure, because they start to wear out, as you know. And we, we didn't for, you know, a big period of time back in the 80s and 90s, we just weren't spending at a rate maybe we should have, and we're trying to catch up.
You connect the dots to what ultimately, I shouldn't say ultimately, but one of the things I care about is the cost, right? In terms of the insurance premium, our liability assessment that we pay to the Washington City's insurance authorities, insurance pull we're part of, and it was flat, keep my years straight because I work in four different years. This year, next year's going down by, I'm forgetting the number, it's over $100,000. And so, it's going in the right direction, and it's making a significant impact on us financially.
Chip, just on exhibit one, page 27, the water utility infrastructure condition, that's one of your indicators, and that has a trend.
Yep, and I'll be touching on that one in fact. Financial management, this one is regarding our audit. We've received a clean audit opinion, meaning no findings for, we're not sure how long it's been, it's been at least since 1995, that's 17 years, we think it's maybe a little bit longer. What's cool about this past year is we had what's called the perfect audit, I may find that boring, but what that means is, we had not only no findings, that's the highest level of concern, you never want a finding, the next level of concern is the management letter item, no management letter items, the final level of concern, the lowest one, is an audit exit item, zero. That is a very, very rare occurrence, and that's the first time it's happened since I've been here, and for, I think in the city's history for that matter. And so, that's, that's a good indicator of how the city is financially managed, not perfect, but it's a really good indicator, and we're proud of that result.
Mr. City Manager, please pass on my appreciation to the finance director on that, and his whole team.
I'll make a note of that tomorrow in my morning memo to the staff.
In all seriousness, that's so very important to the community that, that our finances are, that's part of transparency and trust in government.
Most of the credit honestly goes to LaLawn Tuttle, our county manager, and Francie Lake, my deputy, and to key people in the departments.
Yeah, I do... Yeah, I do, I go too.
It's not just one individual.
It's, we, our systems are reliable. We train our people, and we have good systems in place, and they keep them up, they take them seriously.
You keep me on my toes. It was true.
That's good for a laugh.
Okay, moving us to environmental stewardship. This is priority of government number two. And this, this is one we've tracked for a while, solid waste diversion. I always find it interesting. You look how we're doing relative to King County average, that's really, really good. And anybody would love to have a 69%. That's, that really is excellent. Next one is our new one, the percentage change in island-wide carbon footprint, measuring tons of carbon emissions. I'm, I'm the least qualified to speak of this, on this one, but we've begun measuring it. The changes, the reductions are modest in nine, 10, and 11, as you can see. One of the, the sub-indicators I'm really interested in tracking is what I note below there, about the number of Mercer Island households or customers participating in PSE's green power program. And I'll be curious, because that's, that's a significant number of households, and I'll be curious to watch how that changes over time.
Perfect. Yep, and we're adding a green power challenge this year, and that is in progress. And it will show at the end of this year that we've had a significant increase in that number. I'm not sure, yeah, well, so I guess I can...
Please.
It's not part of your 2011 dashboard, but we have achieved the community goal that PSE had set in conjunction with the city and school district, and have ticked the box that gets us to the $25,000 solar panel installation, and have moved into a stretch goal, which we've set in conjunction with PSE, which with the addition of up to 100 further homes would get us another $5,000 towards that. And each sign-up also has the potential to add 10 bucks towards a PTSA at one of the schools. So we're really focused on a school-based challenge these days, and trying to get PTSAs to benefit as well as the, as the city and the environment. So, good, good news all around on that.
Yeah, it is. That's really good news. Next indicator, we're winding down. I know it's hard to, let's be drone on here. I'll try to wrap it up quickly. These are some of my favorite indicators as well. This is the water utility condition, tracking water main breaks per thousand service connections. And yes, there's a correlation between this and risk management, but I do actually have detailed data on risk management side. And what will jump out at you is, you look at Mercer Islands, and there's definitely, the trend has been better, 1.2 to 0.55 from '07 to '11. But you look at us relative to the jurisdiction average, which excludes Mercer Island, and oh, man, we're, we're higher. Why is that? Tana was at the utility board, where I tried to describe this to the board. Very simply put, and I'm just the finance guy, but having talked to our engineers and our maintenance people, you have very old infrastructure, very old. Now, there's some new pieces, but a lot of very old. For those that have been around for 25 years in this area, think about the growth in terms of new developments, not just little five homes here, I mean, hundreds of homes. At Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, Bothell, Renton, comparatively speaking, on a percentage basis, they have much newer infrastructure. Ours is very old. There's a correlation between the age and our topography and the problems you have. And so actually, these aren't bad numbers.
To be fair, some of ours is actually pretty new, some of it's pretty old. E-Seattle, and First Hill now has got all new, but up until this year, it was all real old. In the older neighborhoods, the stuff was installed 50, 60, 70 years ago. And some of it's been upsized, a lot of it hadn't.
Yeah, and the problem, I remember we put the capital plan when I was on the utility board a while back. The problem too is, when you get the remodels, or you get the teardowns, you've got the infrastructure that supported that smaller lot size, for instance, and then you get the big mega homes coming in that need fire suppression and everything else, and you've got undersized lines, and that's...
These are just not big enough.
It just wasn't there to...
That's our biggest infrastructure problem on the island, is undersized mains.
You'll see in the CIP for water in the budget, that's the big emphasis. And that's, there'll be, there's going to be a rate increase associated simply with the capital to keep working on upsizing these mains.
But I, the reason I love this measure, it's, it's meant to, again, demonstrate hopefully improvement, because you guys, you've, you've approved, and your predecessors have approved some significant rate increases in the water and sewer side. I hope that this and the next slide begin to demonstrate, this is what you get for that. Things are getting better. Sewer utility, number sewer system backups, don't like to think about that very often. Again, you'll see, look at '07, '08 from Mercer Island, and then nine, 10, and 11, significantly better. Still higher than the jurisdiction average, but for the same reasons I just identified previously. We have old stuff. We're working on it.
I have a quick question, Chip. In the explanation, under sewer utility infrastructure, it mentions backups caused by tree roots can be effectively managed by applying a special product?
Mm-hmm.
What special product?
I don't know what it's called.
Like, I'm just curious.
An environmentally sensitive product. It does dissolve them over time. And Terry, I just, I think, I mentioned this to the utility board, just authorized to purchase a whole bunch of Dawn, commercial-grade Dawn, and apparently it really cleans out better than anything, the sewer lines.
Dishwashing detergent Dawn is a really good...
Thank you.
So...
Do you pay to do those things?
Our utility workers all have these beautiful hands.
Yeah, yeah. All right. But anyways, things are improving, as you can see. Almost there. Economic vitality, sales tax per capita. This is excluding those unusual one-time bumps we get from time to time in sales tax. And so, yes, in 11, it's up 4.2%. And, you know, what were the drivers? There was the food services sector was up significantly, just going off the top of my head here. Construction's up 3%. Admin support was up, and there was no one other area I'm forgetting. But overall, things are moving in the right direction. What I ought to mention is, construction, I track construction sales tax very carefully, and it used to be 50% of our total sales tax receipts, not too many years ago, before the recession. And it's been about 38 to 40% more recently. Well, since the second half of this year began, a lot of the construction sales tax receipts associated by VYRA have really picked up. I can see it. And based on what's, I would call it chatter for now, but there's people actually beginning to come in and talk about what they want to do with this parcel, that parcel, that I expect construction sales tax to pick up even more significantly going forward.
Why is it rated as improving instead of very good?
Because look at nine and 10, relative to seven, the bottom line, relative to 2007 and eight. That's the recession. And people will say, hold on, the recession was eight, and was over nine, according to most economists. There's always a lag from a revenue perspective, and so nine and 10, 10 was the bottom for us in terms of sales tax. And so it's not up hugely relative to 10. It's, it's improving.
Yeah, but we're in the new normal.
Solid is great.
We're in the new normal post-June '09. So to really compare anything to '08, '09 is, I just found that odd that with a 4.2% improvement in sales tax, that we classify it as improving instead of fantastic.
There's debate on what the new normal is still. Another measure that I really like, and it's just showing numbers, I know, but it paints a picture if you pay attention to some of the details here, for YFS. In terms of number of individual contacts, parent consultations, school staff consultations, and drug alcohol assessments, there's a whole big write-up. I won't focus on all the years and all the movements, I'll focus on 11. And I guess the significant news is there was a staffing change at Island Middle School, where a part-time counselor went to a, what did I describe it as? Just forgetting. Not so much a counselor, that's focused more on individual counseling, but... I would have my regular presentation here.
Drug and alcohol prevention specialist?
Specialist is what I'm looking for. And that person does more in terms of group and classroom presentations, so that's why there's a reduction in individual contacts, and a reduction in school staff consultations for that matter. The number of parent consultations was up. This year, it's been tied to the economic recession impact on families. So it's just, it's interesting to kind of pay attention to some of these things, and I get these from Derek Franklin, and then I start asking a bunch of questions, why, 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 to kind of scratch beneath the surface and get at what's underneath this. And he's, he's really helpful. But it helps kind of give you a few pixels on the screen of what's going on in the community. The thrift shop. I love the thrift shop. The number of, the net in, I'll start with the numbers first in terms of the last one. Net income is up significantly, hugely, 30, almost 38%. Gross sales revenue up almost 29%. 2011 was the first year we passed the million-dollar gross sales threshold. That was a major milestone. When we were doing the budget two years ago in 2010, and to help balance the budget, we had talked to YFS staff, we did not want to harm YFS's budget, but we were looking at, could we reduce the general fund subsidy, which at the time was $465,000 a year, to, long story short, to 320, and do you think the thrift shop could make up the difference? They said yes. And Suzanne Faleen has blown away my expectations. And again, she, she really, she, the classic phrase, what is it, under-promised and over-delivered, and has done great. And we look forward to having this conversation again with the council during the upcoming budget process.
Yeah, and sneak preview there is, we believe there's another increment of additional thrift shop sales to be brought in. And you'll see a proposal that will involve some staffing, but a proposal that will pay for itself with just more thrift shop sales.
And the thing to kind of pay attention to, this has been an ongoing issue for as long as I've been at the city, the number of volunteer service hours, it's been a decline. And relatively gentle, about 6.4% from '07 to '11. If you pay attention to that, that's caused some staffing challenges, where we've had to go with, we were using lots of work-study, and that ability is kind of going away. We're having to do more paid staff, and so that's just the nature of the business, unfortunately. But our volunteer folks, they, they're passing away, to be honest, is what's happening. And that, my friends, concludes the indicators I wanted to highlight for you. If you have specific questions on any other indicator, have at it.
Thank you, Chip. Questions? Mike?
I have a couple of specific indicators I want to point out for Mr. Conrad and others. Thank you, Chip, by the way, you did a great job. And I like the detail, particularly in the environmental stewardship section. But I will note that our average fuel efficiency for our fleet needs some improvement. And so this is a plug, pardon the pun. You note that there is now an electric charging station at Walgreens right downtown. So we have one at Walgreens, City Hall, Boys and Girls Club, and Peak, yeah, or Community Center. So, twice, and we can get in vehicles that are using alternative fuels is a great thing. And I really want to applaud the mayor and others who are working with PSE on getting solar installed at our schools and public facilities. And there are various programs out there that we won't go into now, but to what extent we can do that, energy usage under 19 would certainly improve quite a bit. I want to make a plug, and I was glad that you put that up there, Chip, on the middle school counselors, because they are fantastic. And for parents who have yet to experience them, please make a point of doing so, because that's money that, you know, we have fronted with the school board, that is extremely well-spent and is put to a great cause. And to what extent we can continue to augment that over time, we should, because it's been my experience, both as a coach, a parent, and as a volunteer there, that they're some of the best counselors I've seen in a school setting, and they really do a great job. So, thank you.
Okay, great. Other questions, comments? Mike Seero.
I have this one metric that always gets in my bonnet, and it had to do with the one that you talked about. It's average fuel, average fleet fuel efficiency. You know, I think this is, I think this is actually a metric that enforces the wrong behavior, it doesn't measure the right thing. And I've always talked about it, what would I like to get rid of? I think what the average fuel efficiency metric does, it promotes or incentivizes replacement at a higher frequency than it may otherwise have been. Well, I think a much, and it's so straightforward, I don't understand why we do it, what would be much more of a sustainability, a true sustainability metric, is not the average fleet fuel efficiency, which doesn't include police vehicles, does it?
Correct.
Which I don't, again, I don't understand that.
I can talk to that in a minute.
I do not understand, well, you tell me every time I say every time I don't understand it, so you don't have to. But, but the clear metric on how to truly measure our improvement in, if you will, our carbon footprint from vehicles would be the amount of fuel we buy, plus our mileage expense. You know, our mileage expense is about, it's about $15,000 a year, I guesstimate, you know, with the people turn in for reimbursement. So those are true, I mean, we have those gates, we have, it's not, it's not, I mean, you have to balance measurements to the paying to measure. We have those gates, it's a true measure of our carbon footprint or our, our use of fuel. And to your point, Councilmember Grady, you know, you'll see, if we start using the plugins, you'll see that in fuel drop. And, because what this doesn't do, it doesn't address behavior. I mean, you can have as many fuel-efficient vehicles, you can max this out in your fuel efficiency vehicles, but if it doesn't change behavior, if we're doubling the number of miles that we're riding, then you're not doing anything. It's not accomplishing what you want to accomplish.
It would happen very often, but I'd agree with Mr. Seero. It'd be nice to have a gallons of fuel consumed as a measure here.
Much better system. I'm just not going to do it now.
Okay.
It gets all of, it's the Evergreen Fleets tool, gets all these measures and gets them to one.
Okay, so let's, let's have a conversation about this. Sustainability Subcommittee would be a great spot to have this conversation, so, Tom.
Especially since we're looking at this as we go into the budget, I would be interested in seeing if there was a, another component that we could add, a dashboard indicator that helped us track food bank usage and counseling services. Because while we look at senior outreach and advocacy, I know that the counseling services have been skyrocketing over the past few years, as has food bank usage. And I think while it's maybe more of a indicator of how our community is doing, I think it's important for us to look at, to, as we're setting the budget for youth and family services, that we're looking at not just, did they spend their budget from last year, but what has the increase, what's the demand, what's the usage been on, again, food bank and counseling to, not just to seniors, but to all, to all people.
I see them writing furiously, so I think your point is made. The latter, well, actually both. I believe you'll get some additional data on what the demand is as we talk about the utility assistance program that we have teed up, and that's coming in your next council packet. So I made it a point to have Cindy and Derek go back and really bring back to you some, some better assessments on what the demand is and how well we're meeting it.
I think those are good ideas. I like those measures. The, just a reminder, we're trying to keep this thing a certain size, sort of, so it doesn't become Bellevue. Maybe it's changed, but they had one that, it had hundreds of measures. And we're trying to do something that kind of strikes that balance, that's not going to kill us administratively. That wouldn't kill us administratively, but it's like, at what point you kind of draw the line in terms of not adding measures? And would be helpful for me to know is, would you find those more useful? And would be helpful for me to know is, would you find those more useful, and would you trade off something else? Maybe thrift shop activity or senior outreach measure?
We'll, we'll work it out.
Okay.
Follow the plan.
Okay. Other comments? I'm looking at the clock thinking we might make nine, if we're quick with our reports here, so. All right, Chip, you're done.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. And with that, we move on to other business. Councilmember absences, we have none tonight, are there any upcoming that we ought to be aware of? Planning, schedule?
You're here back next Monday night, and we will, as I said, be talking about the utility assistance program that we're trying to piece together based on the council's discussion back in January. And then you also get your budget books, Chip and I will do the sort of kickoff of the whole budget process with the budget message. I will be emailing that out to you, actually, it'll be, it'll come as part of an agenda bill Thursday night, so you can read it in advance, and then we'll do the PowerPoint. And then you'll also do the bid award on the Ivancrest Park turf project, so everybody will be throwing money in your direction, and it should be fun. The rest of the planning calendar is so dominated by the budget, there are a few things that I've had to move around and have asked Bruce's help a couple of times, and I think I probably will continue to need to do that. You will notice that we have moved, and I talked to Bruce about this last week, the no net loss and forty-sixty rule ordinance to the other items to be scheduled, not because we don't intend to bring it to you, but I have a sense from Bruce and the council that spending a little more time would be a good thing.
And I'm going to tee this up. Katie, pay attention, you'll tell me if I'm out of bounds on this. Yes. So what I have proposed, and I've talked to a couple of council members about this, is that we are, what we're finding right now is that we're getting a lot of questions, decision-making needs around Town Center. And in similar fashion to the way the Planning Commission did walking tour, but with more of a long-range look at what was defined down there fifteen, as the vision for Town Center fifteen years ago, or more, and then what's evolved from that. The thought that's been proposed is that we have a Saturday morning study session that would involve bringing in some of those folks who created that original plan, talking about what the vision was, and then shifting over to staff who will talk about where we stand with that plan, and then a walking tour of what we've actually got going on. It's a way to talk about the parking situation, it's a way to talk about the sixty-forty rule, it's a way to talk about...
Some of what we talked about with the school board tonight, too. I mean, what was the growth management plan, and what, how was the Town Center part of that?
So what I've asked Rich to do is to see if we can find a Saturday sometime fairly soon, when we could bring in some of those folks and get all of us to, Saturday or Sunday, but a weekend day when we could try and do that.
So I will get first an email out to all the people I think we want to invite, just trying to explain what this is, and then follow it up right behind it with a, we're in the same email, a doodle, is it a doodle scheduling thing? I'm looking at Ali, can, help! Yeah. And I'll get all your names on there, Bruce I talked to, we thought maybe invite the school board as well, and then some of the council members that were on the council when the plan was adopted, what was the thinking at the time, and maybe a couple of people that were actually in the citizen committees that met, we did a lot of public involvement.
We've got Scott back...
Jane used to report on all that, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and we've got Scott back on staff now, who was there at the very beginning, and a bunch of people.
Is that the Klippern report, new?
Not the, no, it wasn't Klippern.
There's a visioning report which had, I mean, I think it'll be, it's of academic interest to people, but to be honest, I mean, I've seen that report, and, because we went through it when we did the last commission on this thing, there's a lot of stuff which is of historical interest, but it's, I mean, I seriously question whether you're going to...
That is not the thing to rest on the discussion. You're talking about the charrette.
Yeah, that whole...
Yeah, I mean, it was one little piece, never formally adopted, it's just one thing to flash and say, this is what stimulated the writing of the design guidelines, and this is what triggered the Town Center layer cake zoning envelope question. And this is how the transportation system got laid out in the Town Center, lining up with I-90 and our cross streets. It's to try and paint the picture, how did this Town Center get designed and built? And, I mean, Bruce is the one that kind of started this idea, but the more I think about it, I'm not sure that most of the council knows this stuff. The fact that you're trying to deal with sort of one-off little questions of the Town Center suggests that a bigger framework for it isn't clear.
And I don't disagree with that, I'm just saying that we, I've seen those charrettes before, they tend to become the focus of these discussions, so just to be careful about that.
Yeah, no, I know exactly what you mean, and it was one piece, it was helpful, but it certainly wasn't the end-all.
Debbie?
Yeah, just commenting on this particular topic, you know, first, I think it was a tremendous asset, at least to me personally, and I know several other people who were in the audience, Terry Mormon in the Chamber of Commerce sponsored a speaker, I believe it was just three weeks ago, it followed just after our last council meeting. And the gentleman was incredibly informative in terms of starting to frame some of the questions, discussions, and issues that we face in terms of defining and then executing on a vision for Town Center. And what that lunch did, as well as some time spent with the particular gentleman outside, was to really start to help me understand the amount that I don't know. And so I talked to Rich, and I've talked to several other council members, just feeling that before, as a member of the liaison to the Planning Commission, but also as a council facing these issues that will so dramatically impact our Town Center for years, if not decades to come, we need, I think, very much, we need to spend more time. I think this is an excellent first step, I don't think it's going to be sufficient, at least for me, to know that I can legislate appropriately, but I can't encourage us all enough, the extent to which we have time, to try to understand both the principles of development, not all of them, but the basic principles of development, and also ask the developers and the property owners to explain to us why their property has been developed the way it has been, and why it is the way it is, because there's probably many issues and many questions that we've never anticipated. So, hundred percent support not making any moves on this ordinance in the near future till we're all smarter.
Right, and to the question of near future, my feeling is, I'd like to get this study session to happen as soon as possible, so that we aren't, you know, pushing indefinitely the questions that are on the table that are important questions. I'd like to get back to those very quickly, but I feel like this is an appropriate first step, and so I've asked Rich to try and push ahead.
We'll get that out ASAP, and I would not be surprised to see this happen late October, early November, just because of the scheduling. I mean, we had some people that are just hard to calendar, but I will do the best I can, and...
Okay. Where are we? So planning schedule, Rich, do you have anything else for us on that?
No.
Okay.
When is Shoreland coming back to us? That is coming back the end of November, be in November?
Go ahead, Noel.
We were just talking, I just... Yeah, the Department of Ecology is scheduling a hearing for the end of October. After that, they'll have a public comment period for several weeks, and then, once they've received all those comments, they'll package them, and they will send those to us for a response. We'll then have some time to do some staff work on those, and then we're going to bring them to the council before we provide a response to Ecology, so that you can weigh in on what that response should look like. So that's not going to probably happen until later November.
Does that mean it moves? Yeah, so is the item on the calendar?
It's not on the calendar yet, because we're still waiting to hear from Ecology as to what the exact timeframe's going to look like. It's possible that that could even drift to December or early next year at this point.
Right. Right now, we still show an item November 5th for just a review of where we stand, so that'll have to move.
Yeah.
Will you keep the council informed as far as DOE's schedule, or their hearings?
Yeah, when they, when we have all that nailed down, we'll let you know.
Other questions on the planning calendar? Okay, board appointments, we have none. Councilmember reports. Mike, you want to begin?
I had a meeting with a colleague that somebody may know over in Cedar Kirkland the other day, and it was on issues, we talked about sustainability, but I work closely with the Sustainability Subcommittee. The ask is that the green team, or whatever you call our team here now, the respective green teams get together and start working closely together, because Kirkland is looking at some similar issues that we are dealing with downtown, but specifically on transit-oriented developments, and ways to access existing and future grant monies through HUD, DOT, and Federal Transit Authority that will become available. But in addition to looking at the ability to make a transit-oriented development work in both Kirkland and Mercer Island, which we kind of characterize as the last stop of the transit train, because many people come to our parking lot, it's their last stop, they get on the bus and head downtown, same thing happens in Kirkland, is they're trying to find a way to make that work with private and public enterprise, which would require legislation in Washington State, unlike back in the Midwest. So there's some real opportunities here, both in terms of doing things locally, affecting change at the state level that could have an impact on the, kind of the flavor of the development we would look for downtown, and also potentially getting some grant funding toward Mercer Island. In addition, on the fun side, Kirkland is also looking to test out, as would joint-based Lewis McCord, autonomous cars with Google. And so we're going to reach out to Google, and as a matter of fact, BMW's got a version out, and some other auto manufacturers, to see to what extent we can not only test them with Department of Defense and/or at Kirkland with their pedestrian walkway next to their Google facility, but also address the last mile issue with our transit. Because one of the biggest concerns we have with transit on the island is getting from the south end particularly to the north end, and there's no parking. Well, if you have an autonomous car that you can call up at your disposal and come to your house, you don't need to worry about parking. So we've avoided the avoided, potential avoided cost of having to build a parking lot, that would cost eight to twelve million dollars. So these are the fun things that sustainability can also deal with. That's right. Thank you.
Debbie?
No specific committee to report on, but I think at the end I would love to hear from you where we are with PSE and the infamous boxes downtown.
Do you want to?
I don't have anything to report, since the meeting that three council members and myself met with our PSE representatives, and they haven't gotten back to me on anything, they haven't, I don't, I assume they haven't got back to Mike on his request for information.
How do we encourage them to come back to us?
Call them up and ask them. I certainly will do that.
If you need my help, please let me know.
The frustration here is they, they don't think they have to do anything.
Shall we give them a call? Okay.
Okay. Tom. Debbie, did you have anything else? Okay.
We had two utility board meetings, and they have been very in-depth and very informative, looking at the EMS levy and the utility rate details, both the capital improvement plans for the utilities and the resulting rates. And so I think when we get the budget report, we have a shortened version, but I have to say that we have an amazing utility board with very informed people who really picked apart the different projects and what the rates meant, and it was, it was really great to see, and I want to, you know, thank our utility rate, our utility board members, because they really put in a lot of time, and so did the staff, and it was very educational, and that was great. Kind of tying a little bit into that, on Saturday is the drug take-back program that the city has, and that's important for a number of reasons, partly for tying into the utility, to not put medicines down the sink, because that really is bad for the water quality, and also obviously for safety for, especially for kids, getting to the medicine cabinet, and that's the new drugstore. So if you have expired or unused medicine, please bring that back on Saturday to, here at City Hall. And then, thirdly, as most people know, and we mentioned earlier, we had a joint meeting with the school board right before this, and I just wanted to commend their work, and looking forward, I know a lot of people in the community have talked about they wanted to have more engagement and discuss more information about the school bond, and I want to encourage people to take that opportunity in the next few weeks when the school board does open up their different ideas to weigh in, to get educated, and to learn about it, so that when it does come up on the ballot in the near future, that people are informed and have had the opportunity to learn a lot about that. And then lastly, if we do adjourn fairly soon, I think it will be the earliest adjournment since I have been on the council.
Dan, you sure? You don't want to take an hour and blow Tom's, you know, hopes and aspirations here? All right. Jane?
Yes, I attended the Arts Council meeting on the 12th of September, and they've ordered new plaques for the new art, Orbits and Pieces in front of the Community Center, and Reclining Woman at Mercerdale Park. Also, they're working on a proposal to do a digital catalog to document and catalog the city's art collection. Right now, there are paper files and folders in all sorts of places, oh, since nineteen, probably the fifties and sixties, that need to be organized and categorized and put together. So that's something they'll be proposing. And also, currently, at the Community Center, the Arts Council has on display its first-ever juried art show, which is a big deal, because the Arts Council has never done a juried art show before, and they had a very well-attended reception on the 13th, and lots of participation. So do stop by the Community Center, notice the art when you go in. The Open Space Conservancy Group met on the 13th and had a report on the letterboxing program that happened this summer. I think it was the third year of the letterboxing, and they had a lot of participation, they handed out four hundred packets, they got back eighty completed ones of kids who've gone around to discover all the, to find all the clues. They're going to have a party for the participants on November 8th at their meeting. One downside is, they've had a lot of vandalism this summer of the letterboxes, unfortunately, and not quite, it's the first time that's happened, and they don't know quite how to prevent that, but something to be aware of. And we had a root rot report, there's, they're going to be starting...
Say that, too.
Root rot report, yes. Problems in the southeast quadrant of Pioneer Park, and they've identified some trees that are dead or dying that will be partially cut down, they're not going to be cut down low to the ground, but rather left as snags, maybe six feet high, which is better for the control of root rot. And they will be systematically treating some of the neighboring trees with trichoderma, which is a low-cost, but it, treatment, but it's, its effectiveness is still somewhat questionable, so they've got a little trial that will be happening. Some trees will be treated, and others will be untreated, and park people will be watching how well they do to control the root rot problem, which is really bad. And that's it.
Thank you. Mike?
Jane, I had ETP meeting, whether we want to weigh into the Legislative Assembly that ETP may bring forward. Rich, I think your staffs can engage with that.
We'll get a copy of their legislative...
It's pretty mom and apple pie, or, so.
That's it? Okay. I had asked Rich if he could give us an update on SaaS report on Island Crest Way, which is on the verge of done, but not quite done, so maybe you can...
Yeah, no discussion or debate here, I'm just telling you what Clint passed on to me today. All the asphalt paving is completed, all the sidewalk and path work is completed, except around the mailbox drop-off. around the mailbox drop-off. All the pavement markings are completed, roadway signage is being installed this week. Most of the shoulder and landscape restoration has been completed, but they still got some repairs on some irrigation lines to finish up. The mailbox drop-off area still needs some decorative concrete, sidewalk poured, and the mailbox returned. Some utility castings on the northbound shoulder to raise, oh, have to be raised to grade. Six streetlights still need to be installed later this fall by PSE. So, he estimates they're at about 95% complete, and he's putting most of his time over on 90th, as if you've been over there, you've seen that there's a lot of paving going on over there. So, I hope to have Clint in here next Monday night, just in and...
We always are.
No, you get to be social workers and say nice things.
It looks like you're doing traffic counts all around.
Yeah, I guess they got the counters out, so...
They're everywhere. How long do those stay on?
I don't know, you'll have to ask Clint when we get there.
Yeah. I rode around the island the other day, and about everywhere I go, I see one, so, they're certainly out. It's over to me, and I had something, I can't remember what it was, so... I'm sorry? Yeah, no. It'll come to me right after I bang the gavel. We are, well, thank you all very much, we are adjourned.